This time we're going to call our special meeting, daughter. First to the people in the audience, thank you for taking time to come out today. We have five items on the agenda. We'll start with the, we'll start from the top and come down. We'll start with our administrator on administrative transitions, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agenda, employees, personnel, administrative transition. All I want to talk to County Commission about today is, it's nothing new. It's just, I'm asking the County Commission to reaffirm what you've already done several years ago. We have commissioners here now that were not here then, and all of this, what I want to talk about is because what's going to happen next year and a half, year and a half, two years? We have several key personnel that's going to be retiring in some shape, form, or fashion, leaving in next year and a half. You know, we could, we could call the names here today or, or not. All of them as indicated, they're getting out of the picture. And, and what the County Commission has done before is given me the authority to, to keep those positions filled. In some cases, we need to hire from within, move up. Some cases, we need to go to the street and hire someone to fill those positions. And however, we've got to do it. We just need to do it. We don't need to wait till it happens. Yesterday, I received a resignation letter from Scott, G.I.S. One man banned G.I.S., he's going to Bay County, working for the Bay County Board of Commissioners. So, we won't have enough time to get someone in before Scott leaves on the 28th to have some overlap, and G.I.S. is very important to be able to show someone what we have. We've, we've got a lot accumulated in G.I.S. But same thing, if I were to use David, for example, David's a one-man band. He's not real deep. He's only quarterback in that, in that office. Before David leaves, we need some overlap. No different than Joe. When Joe leaves, we need some overlap in that office before he leaves. When Stephanie, she, she does the money work with emergency management. Before Stephanie leaves, we need, we need some overlap in that. So, in some cases, from within, some cases from the street. And, and as in the past, unless the board tells me different, that may be the reason to move people back and forth. We have a skeleton crew. We don't have any depth to any office. When, when the planner's on vacation, we don't have a planner. When G.I.S. is on vacation, we don't have a G.I.S. man. IT is on vacation, we don't have an IT man. You're one, one man deep on almost everything you have. So, what I'm asking the board to do is to reaffirm what you've already done to allow us to keep these offices full and keep them, keep people in them. And two, the County Commission's policy is for, when it comes to like pay adjustments, myself and whoever the chair is, is the one that signs off on pay adjustments. Mr. McDaniel is new chair, first time being chair. There's a reason, I have reason to believe we need to be looking at some pay adjustments. We, we don't want to, we spend a lot of time, a lot of money having employees educated, send them to school, send them to class, send them to seminars, then we lose them somewhere else. The reason I put it on the agenda for the board is if there's something that we need to change, we need to change it now, otherwise, we're going to keep these jobs filled, keep these slots filled. Maybe a bad example, when David does determine going down the road in planning, that's a good possibility. We may put planning under building, and that way, people can be cross-trained, and if somebody goes on vacation, sick, whatever, gets the lottery, whatever, they're not there, we have somebody else in the office, they can keep that job going. And that's, I think that's true of several of our jobs. We don't have the luxury of having several people in each office. And the one person we do have, that one person got to know what that one person is doing. Got, got to know. We don't have the luxury of hiring extra people just to be learning the ropes on the way up the ladder because only one, one person in that office. But all I'm asking you to do is to reaffirm what you've already done, so we can keep these jobs mostly properly and keep them filled.
I'm good with that, Don. I think the reason he done that to begin with, with hiring and firing and everything else, was to kind of keep the politics out of it. You just manage the workforce that you see on a daily basis, so I'm good with it.
And, and I'm definitely good with it. This is his little arena right here, and he needs the, he needs to be able to run it like he needs to.
You need a, I think that was already policy, but you need a...
It's, it's already a policy. To this magnitude, we're going to have some changes coming in the next year and a half. And, I mean, you're going to see changes, and we just, we don't need a bump in the road. If we see a bump in the road, we need to go ahead and try to smooth it out now, but otherwise, we're going to keep the show going.
Let's upgrade it, and I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
If we can do that, then that, there won't be any doubt on the board.
Okay, let me get this first, and we've got a motion here by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Now we go into the discussion phase.
Just reaffirming what's already been done. It's commissioners come, commissioners go, and to this magnitude, one at a time every now and then, it's not a big deal. But when in a year and a half's time, we're, we're literally talking about, we'll get over into the union too, we're talking about 10 or 12 people in that year and a half. Some of, some of your, every one of your people are key people. I mean, when you're one deep in these offices, every man is a key person, and also in the, in the union, the people we're losing in the union is going to be your key people. Today, we're down to, to one man working the excavator, and we walk.
I saw it today.
And, because the man that normally works the excavator is gone for two or three months because of surgery or something. So, we don't, we don't have a lot of people, but we're, we're going to see a big change in next year and a half.
Commissioner Bryan? Wait a minute, Commissioner Smiley anymore? Okay, Commissioner Bryan?
I agree that you are the county administrator and you have the authority to make personnel decisions, but my question is, what we're reaffirming today, is that somewhere in writing that the public can see and that we can see what we are reaffirming?
It's certainly not good and clean. Sometimes it's just board action, board, a motion second, but as for the hire and the fire and, and to, to keep jobs filled, and if there's any change, it's not really a change, but as we know somebody's going to leave, go ahead and have somebody onboard before a person leaves to have some overlap in that job, not to wait till they leave and then hire. We really can't take a change. It's going to be bad enough with G.I.S. And if there's anything new, but that, that would be an assortment of board policies and board actions to, to support it.
Speaking of G.I.S., did Scott finish the, all the maps for the Cobra? He finished those, didn't he?
He finished those.
There he is, right there.
Scott delivered today.
You can't leave until you finish those maps, Scott.
He delivered the Enterprise Zone map, so he got those two today. Every Enterprise Zone member, both cities and both libraries, will get a copy of that new map. So, he's got, he's got his work cut out for him from now until like the end of the month.
I would just say that all the commissioners and the public should be made aware as we move forward with changes and actions that are taken. I would, I would just like to add that.
I agree, I agree with that. At one time, Don, we were working on a, a book, so to speak, of, of board policy, and I think, you know, if, like you said, everybody's a one-man show, and I think even Tuan worked on it for a little while, but then the grants got heavy. It wouldn't be a bad idea if, if we get some slack time for somebody to work on that book of board policy, because there's probably more policies than we even know about. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner's point, if I can, I just, maybe it's just a request. If I can, I'd like to go back and look. I know that you're speaking to the various policies or things you've taken votes on in the past. If I can go back, I'll look. If there's a way that I can maybe codify it or come with something that's very clear for the public and the commission to understand, I can come back and try, I'll, let me look first at the history of the votes, and then come back to you all with the recommendations, so it's very clear as to black and white, whatever that may be. The statute in non-charter counties also speak to administrative roles and their authorities, and what they can't do in the governmental agency. So, if I can, I'd like that opportunity to go look at that and then come back to you all with maybe clearly, maybe clearly define that. If, if you can provide me that instruction, I'd do it.
If you can include that in the motion.
Go ahead and clear. You want to pull and table this and come back on? What would be the...
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That's why, that's why I went ahead and put the motion on, on the table today. What is intended is very clear. We have a second, and that would clear up anything that's laying out there. I don't have a problem with going back and pulling out policies, you know, and look, but this vote today clears it. That's why I put the motion out there.
I'm good with that. Jeremy, if you, if, yeah, I don't mind you researching it too and getting it kind of clear for us too. That way...
Yeah, I understand the motion is to authorize the administrator, and, and if I, I will, after the action of the book commissioned, I'll go back and look. If there's something I can do to bolster that, then I'll certainly come back to you all in the coming weeks with something to that effect.
Well, bottom line is this, and I was unaware, just met with the gentleman a while ago, and I'll see him after this, we're going to lose these people. And it's not my position to, I'm not, you know, to go out and try to round up people. We need a procedure and a policy to get them. They've got to be, if we can set up within, and not have anybody. We may have to go outside. We may have to advertise. What we do, it will follow procedure now. You do any hiring or moving around, we will follow, and if it involves union employees, they will go through whatever the union senior, that'll be highly respected. It has to be. So, that's my two cents on it. We are, I, we're going, we are. We're going to lose some very, very, very key people, and I hate to do it. They've been with us a long time, and that's, that's a good sign that things, you know, we don't have just constant turnover, 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 turnover. We don't have that. A lot of counties go through that. That's some of their biggest issues, turnovers. We, fortunately, we haven't had to experience that. So, you want your motion, stay there, and fine you. All right, Commissioner Bryan? Anything, all right, we'll, anything in the public, we'll pass the public. Public have any comment or anything they'd like on this? Just the procedure. Not any further discussion or call there's any opposition to this.
I'm going to vote no, just, not in principle, but I just don't think it's clear, so I'm going to vote no.
Well, okay. How you vote, Commissioner Smiley?
I vote yes.
Yes, the chair votes yes. Motion passed, 41. What else, Mr. Butler?
That's all on that issue.
All right, move over now to B, Sheriff Supervisors Elections Relocation. You going to address that, Mr. Butler, or the attorney?
I think, I think a combination. I'll lead into it.
Okay.
The County Commission spoke last commission meeting about potential relocation of sheriff, sheriff spoke to you about his needs, and I think he can tell you much better than anybody else where these, where these needs are. But just trying to get ahead of the curve, trying to figure out, we, certainly elections coming up this year, if the board's going to make a move, we don't need to waste too much daylight. And if you're not going to make a move, then it's not a big deal. But sometime a week makes a lot of difference, or two weeks makes a lot of difference. But I guess the main thing we need would be some conversation or some direction. If, if the County Commission told us to, to start the process, doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow, but it would mean we'd, we'd start figuring it out, the first step, what's got to be done if, if we did make a relocation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak on that too, just so we can clear up one item. I think Mr. Smiley had a very good point during that discussion, when the sheriff brought that up. And I, you know, we have got to find the sheriff a place, and I think that's an appropriate place. It's got the, it's got the amount of square footage for as many people as he's got, and honestly, it's got a lot more square footage than what you just need for the supervisor's elections. So, I want to put to bed, I don't think that the sheriff's office is an appropriate place to put him. Number one, it's, to me, it's, it just, it doesn't fit. And I've talked to John about this. I went to him after the meeting the other day, and John believes strongly, and I see we've got a letter from him here, but that's not, it's, it's just not going to work for him. So, what I would propose to do is let's make clear, we don't want to move, move John, so we don't have that discussion as we're moving him out by the jail. Let's, let's move forward, and, and I'm for going out and letting, letting Don and the sheriff and the, and the supervisors of elections work together and find the supervisor's election appropriate place downtown, or an appropriate place that John's comfortable with, that the public will be comfortable with, and, and move forward and let that, let that, that group come back to us and say, here's what we think we need to do. There may, and, and you may have to go out for an RFP for, for space downtown, but I know there's a lot of buildings downtown, but it's just getting the one that John needs and keeping, keeping, you know, some, a good spot for him. Commissioner Smiley made a good point. Whether it's a valid argument or not a valid, it is an argument about, you know, people may not want to come out there by the jail to vote. So, I'm for moving forward with us letting this committee get together with, with John and Mike and, and Don, and, and letting them come back to this board with a, with a, with a recommendation of how to proceed and go from there. But I want to take off the, because I've heard, you know, I've heard other, since, since Tan's argument on that, I've heard other people call me and say, well, we don't think it's the right place to be either. So, I think we should take that off the table and move with letting these three guys figure it out.
Well, let me ask this question then, would, and just for the public, and some of the members may not know, Mr. Hanlon is not here, unable to come today. He sent a letter, Mr. Hanlon is out in the, was put in the hospital out at Sacred Heart this morning, suffering from some chest pains, but they still have him there, and he hasn't transferred. So, that's a reason Mr. Hanlon's not here. But if someone wants to, we can just simply take this sheriff's, old sheriff's office out of the loop.
Matter of fact, if you need a motion to that, I'd put that in the form of the motion.
If you want to clarify that, that was one of the big things that was there.
Yeah, I don't want people to still say, hey, we're trying to put him out of the sheriff's office. I don't think it's adequate. I think, number one, it's part of the, kind of the jail. There's very few offices in there. I think it probably, it's appropriate for jail administrative offices, but, but it's not big enough for, for John, and it's certainly not big enough for the sheriff. And, but I do think that the building down there that, that John used, that supervisors of elections in, is large enough for the sheriff. He's already got part of his people there, and so I think that would fit him, but it's too large for just John.
Now, he, all the building not being occupied at the time of the...
Right, there's, there's too much open space there. So, if, if you need a, a motion...
Well, why don't we do that?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we not move the supervisor's elections to the, to the sheriff's office. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Not a motion right over here by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Smiley?
Second.
Your second. Any discussion, board members, any, any comments or discussion from the public? All right? Any opposition to this motion? Not this motion carries, five and oh.
And I'd like the board's opinion, the rest of the board's opinion, I'd like to move forward with the motion that we just let our administrator and the sheriff and John come back with a recommendation on how to proceed with, with taking care of the space for both offices.
Second, that motion.
Well, so move, second.
All right, you got a motion? You got a second right here. Any further discussion on the, discussion right here? Commissioner Smiley, you have the floor.
Well, I just sat back, and I was thinking about everything that Mr. Jaeger said, and I was just thinking about everything that we had already talked about. And I think this would be a perfect time for us to send the invitation to the city, because we talking about spending lots of money on upgrading the building. So, I mean, we're going to spend this money, if we can talk with the city, and if they want to put some in, consolidate to help build this building up for the sheriff, I mean, it's going to serve us right there in the middle of, in that Pope Saint Joe downtown. I mean, that's just something I was thinking about. I mean, it's something, everybody talking about coming to the table, let's send the invitation to them, see if they want to come to the table and talk about it. Talking about spending money, upgrading everything, the systems in the building, and right now, each one of you guys know we kind of shot on cash.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that or anything else. I do think that that's a city issue that they have to make a decision on.
I'm not saying that. I said send an invitation.
I, I'm not opposed to sending an invitation to have a discussion on it.
Yeah, at least, I mean, we can, just like, they're going to sit down and talk at the table about it, and if they want to sit, you never know. Because we all going through basically the same thing right now, is a money crisis. So, because if we had the money, we could build a sheriff a building right now, just put him in a building and forget it all.
Yeah, that'd be nice, you know? Build one that lasts another 57, 55 years, the county grows, we got, but can't.
But if we're, but if we're going to sit down and look at something, let's not put blinders on towards that. Let's look at everything.
Here's what, for John, Don to have just a conversation with, with the city administrator, city manager.
Manager.
And say, are y'all interested in, in taking a look at this? If they are, that's fine. If they're not, we'll have to proceed on our own. I'm, I'm not opposed to him, you know, going and having that conversation.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm...
I just think it's a city decision.
Will you do that?
Yes, sir. I can do that. If we could, I think, Mr. Attorney can keep us guided in the right direction. If we could parallel that with advertising, a request for proposals for someone to provide buildings for us, a building, and at least see what the cost is going to be. But I mean, you have to take it, but at least see what the cost is while we're talking with the city.
Exactly. I mean, put everything on the table, and what we can keep, we keep on the table, and what we can't keep, we just push it as that.
All right. You take care of that, Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
Would you, you in there, attorney?
That need to be put in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second, I think, Mr. Chairman. Oh, we, that was on, we were going to exclude the...
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have another motion? I didn't, no, I didn't think so.
I think we're just giving Don the...
Yeah, right over here.
Ten.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Butler?
No, sir.
Mr. Smiley, are you?
Mr. Chairman, I did have that Jaeger and McLemore made a motion that'll just let them work it out and come back with a recommendation.
Absolutely. Okay. I was right. That's the reason we got you, we get...
If, if there's, there's, Mr. Chairman, there's a motion and a second, and then there was discussion, I believe they, there was an addition to that in the discussion. If there's going to be a, a vote, you want to, is it an amendment?
Add on, and add on, and add on, okay, okay.
So, if there's an amended motion, I think you talked about advertising.
I think the only amendment we, we talked about is, is to incorporate the, the advertisement for the space. So, I'll, I'll include that in my motion.
All right, so we're going after advertisement, is that it?
Well, that's...
Oh, yes, look.
We're going to give them authority. They're going to make discussions and...
Okay, all right, I'm with you, I'm with you, okay.
And that's on the board also for the invitation and all, right?
Right.
Okay. We got a vote. A motion on the floor, got a second. Any further discussion? Any, anyone from the public on this? All right. So, any opposition? All right, this motion passed, five and oh. That clears our motions, doesn't it, Ms. Norris?
We passed two motions.
There you go. Okay, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, I think this probably turns loose. We'll have a conversation. Sheriff can give us some good guidance on, here we need an evidence room in that building, and that's in the back of the building, not being utilized by the supervisors of elections. If we could, we go ahead and make plans and get our materials and start working on getting that room built. We need it built, so we can unload this element's room, put it down there. It's going to be a fireproof room. That'd be the first step we ought to take.
Don, isn't part of that already built? I mean, it's, isn't there one firewall already?
The very back wall is a four-hour fire ready wall, and we need to build three more walls.
Okay.
And, Mr. Butler, this is coming out of the sheriff department's budget right now. You're right. All right, you still have the floor.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, the correspondence you have from the supervisors there for you as well, I'll provide a copy to the clerk. You all have a copy up there, but he had asked, although he took ill, he wanted you all to have that. So, the administrator and the commissioners have it, as does the clerk.
Good.
And, and I think it's in the spirit of cooperation that he offered to the sheriff.
I think it's very, I've read it. I think it's very fair, and I think he's very understanding on this, and, okay. We took out the one thing he was opposed there, so we voted it to get off, so it's out of the picture. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, if I can, I'd like to move on to C on the agenda.
All right, C on the agenda for the public is the BP litigation. We have a special counsel with us, our, the all-farm representing Gulf County is the Beezahadling Farm out of Montgomery, and Mr. Ron Jones, that farm is here today. Ron, you would?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on Friday, we received correspondence and then communication from counsel for both the TDC and the county, and our two forms, firms that represent the county, that BP has rescinded their offers to the county that we've been working on for over a year. They sent correspondence to that effect. I put a copy of that letter in front of all of you there. Very simple, two sentences, but reaffirming that they've rescinded that. The attorneys for BP had communicated with Mr. Jones and our TDC counsel verbally as well. And Mr. Jones had requested the opportunity to come down and address that immediately after receiving that, and he's come down today to address you all, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. BP has taken a position of late that they don't want to talk with anybody about anything. It's not just Gulf County, or it's, it's everybody everywhere. I'm here as part of my regular update. There are some things that I probably should, if you want to, discuss with me individually, commissioners, after this meeting. I'll stay here as long as you would like me to. So, it's not anything that's specific to Gulf County. This is an across-the-board move by BP. I have some theories as to why I think they've done it. I think it's important to remember that just because they did it, doesn't mean that it can't change back. You know, sometimes defendants want to talk to you, sometimes they don't. Regardless, what we're going to do is, as part of my update, you know, the case is now in New Orleans with all other cases of all other local governments, all other states, everybody who's filed a case is there, we're going to continue to push for a release from New Orleans as soon as we can get it, which, you know, I don't know exactly when that'll be, but I'll be willing to discuss scenarios with you if you like in private. And, you know, there may be a test case for a local government that takes place within the MDL in New Orleans, which would also be instructive for, for some of our issues. And again, just as they changed their mind and didn't want to talk, they may decide they do want to talk. There are a lot of moving parts, probably the most complex piece of litigation I've ever been involved in. It's got a lot of moving parts at a lot of levels. So, I just wanted to report in. I'll be here today after the meeting, as I said. I'll be here every quarter personally until this thing is done. I'm here to serve you guys and ladies, and we'll do whatever it takes, however you instruct, and, you know, however long it takes. And hopefully, BP will, you know, come around, and it'll be sooner rather than later. And that's really all I wanted to, to say today, is just to give a really brief update.
All right, Ron, one thing, if I may, and we have our news, local news media here, and for the people. Now, this isn't just Gulf County. What about the great state of Mississippi?
Well, no, and, and as I tried to say earlier, I may not have said it clearly enough, this is an absolute across-the-board move. There's not a parish in Louisiana that's in discussions, there's not a county in Mississippi, the county that remains in Alabama is not in discussion. This is, this is across the board. It's uniform to everybody. This is absolutely nothing specific...
This reaches from Key West to the Texas.
It reaches to everywhere, to everybody, to every entity that BP may have ever had a, a note, or a discussion, or an email, or a word with, across the board. And like I say, I can tell you, you know, some things in private, they're just things I think, but it's not, it's not any big secret. They have, they have decided to not talk with anybody right now, and that's their with anybody right now, and that's their right, I think they will eventually change their mind, and if they don't, we'll, we'll move forward regardless, but that's where we are. So it's not, it's certainly not anything specific to Gulf County. It's, it's everybody, everywhere, not just local governments, it's, it's, it's everybody who has a claim of any type, so I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can, since Mr. Jones is here, to, to, further on his point, um, there has been, what we understand is governments, local governments that have reached recent, um, resolution, and that wherever it came, the line in the sand, nothing's changed with regards to Gulf County in terms of the offers made to the county and how they're gonna resolve it. So as we move forward, we got this letter, um, the offer to the county's been rescinded, and what we understand is the governmental offers out there, uh, across the various states have been rescinded, um, but there, if there are some recent settlements that have been reached, um, that was prior to them rescinding this offer, so as you move forward, and if we hear of ones in, um, in the coming future, that, we just wanted to put that condition on there, that there are some other communities that may have reached one before they've rescinded these offers.
Anything else, Mr.? Go back.
No, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, move to the la, he, the last on the agenda for the day, is the, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, Port Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right on my, I can't see-
Ron, you're gonna be here afterward, if the commissioners individually wanna conference, you say you're gonna be here for some time afterward.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm getting what I'm hearing right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, while we're on the topic of litigation, commissioners, um, I had sent out to you all a copy of the order from Judge Fischel, signed, I believe, last Thursday, with regards to, uh, the foreclosure action on the Port Authority. Um, I provided you all a copy of that order, I have some more here for you if you'd like it. Um, in, in summary, uh, Judge Fischel found, uh, for Capital City and granted the summary judgment motions, um, and I think we had about nine or ten months of protracted motions, um, and he finally rendered his order. Um, there's already been dialogue and correspondence amongst the various attorneys for the teams on proposed summary judgments and the language to be used, um, and we'll keep you abreast of that as we move forward. This, obviously, the order came out as its ripple effect to you all as commissioners in the county, um, and what I'll be doing is, uh, with the administrators' permission and instructions, we'll reach out to the port, as you all know, you all have an interest in the Port Authority, in the, um, loan agreement that you issued to them two years ago, um, you have collateral with that loan agreement, um, and it, it actually begins to mature come this May. So if it is very appropriate and timely that we reach out to them and discuss the impacts of the order, the pending summary judgment, and obviously, your loan agreement with them, so we'll be reaching out to them in the coming week. Um, I know the commissioner and I attended that Port Authority meeting last week prior to the issuance of the order, um, but I'll reach out to the chairman and, and go from there.
Chairman, you said we had a, for some reason, I was thinking that we had no collateral, that we asked for some collateral with the, with the Arizona Chemical site being free and clear, that was, did they ever give us that collateral?
Uh, no, yeah, they did not. Last year, when we got into the discussion of extending the agreement, which was a request of the Port Authority, as we approached this anniversary in May, um, there was a discussion of moving the collateral, or cross-collateralizing and using another parcel or asset of the, of the port, they had actually tendered that offer, and for you guys all to, to consider, um, and that is probably something that'd be appropriate to revisit.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Want public?
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda is E, with regards to a state of emergency proclamation. If you all recall, back on January twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, we had, um, a deep freeze, uh, Mr. Nelson, our emergency management director and the county administrator, um, and myself, and, uh, obviously, saw it coming, and the emergency management director wanted to declare the state of emergency, um, I think they were contemplating shutting the bridges down and keeping everybody off the road that day. Um, we now have a proclamation prepared, um, just ratifying the state of emergency that the, uh, emergency management director placed that day, um, giving him the authority to take the actions which he did over those next forty-eight hours. Um, and I don't know if Marshall wanted to comment as a follow-up to that at all in terms of those two days, or if there's anything you wanted to add? Okay, you all have a copy of the proclamation in front of you, it is, um, consistent with